Good. The guest folks, for those of you who don't know Mike, he is our, will be our new township supervisor, starting in January, is that correct? So, welcome aboard, Mike. Thanks for having me. Usually we go through, we have some visitors here, I'd just like to give you guys an idea of what we're doing. This is our workshop planning commission meeting. Every month we have an official planning commission meeting. Ours on the last Tuesday is right. And then because we have so much work before us to get done, we started meeting on the second night, which is tonight. And so that's the reason why we just kind of work in circles. We were working on subdivision land ordinances, we're working on planned residential development ordinances, and how that all ties into these other. We won't get all that done forever. We only do it once a month and also have a regular meetings. The way we normally work it is we open up for public comment pertaining to the agenda, the first part, and then at the end of the meeting, open up for open comments. But I don't want to hold you guys up. If you're welcome to stay and listen to how we go through ordinances, but that happened the last week, a couple of weeks ago, or some other couple of days here. And I felt bad that we kept them the whole time so that they could raise their issue because they would have left after. So, I'll ask you guys to, you know, explain why you're here and what your, you know, what your questions may be. Then you're welcome to stay the rest of the night with us or leave depending on your schedule.
Perfect, go ahead.
Can I say something first, though?
Yes.
I just want to say it is better to stay. You know, I think we want to think all are better, you know, active and future, past, present, future, and our families.
Thank you.
Good point. You know what, fairly new to the township, alright? I'm Patrick Keller. Over in Homewood, Pfeifer. This is my daughter and son-in-law, and they bought her a home recently on Schmidt. And we just wanted to be an active part of the township. We figured we'd attend. Maybe not tonight was the right night, I'm not sure. So, is this the night we should? Is a public forum or is another night better?
Well, first. Our official township meeting where the planning commission looks at subdivision plans and proposals.
Okay.
Curative amendments and all those things, that may be more interest to you than us sitting around talking about.
Okay, and when is that then, first?
Our next meeting is what, the?
The last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday.
The last Tuesday.
The last Tuesday, definitely.
Alright, so we're a little early there. Alright. Well, you know, we don't have much on our plate other than we will come on the last Tuesday of Monday, alright?
And that's for the planning commission. I would say that another point of interest for you would be the supervisors or supervisors' meetings. I think they're, they cover a lot of the ground. You know, they're, they're the ones, if we recommend something to them, they're the ones that approve it or don't approve it. And they send it back for us for reconsideration. So, if you're just interested in, you know, how the township works, that's another one we can go to.
Well, you know, I, you know, maybe I can have a sidebar if you'd like. And you can fill in so we don't take up all your time, Mike. We do have one small, maybe something we can throw out. Maybe it's a topic of discussion for this committee, but Schmidt Road seems to be falling apart. And I don't know if it's in the plans, have it prepared soon. And the reason I bring that up is just last week I was exiting. And actually kind of had it run off the road, only because it's deteriorating on most sides. Now it's becoming that. So, I'm not sure if any of you have been down on Schmidt Road. We've got people down there now logging, setting holes. It was rough before they even started that. So, I'm fearing that it's going to get a lot worse. So, we were just curious, what's in the plans for the Schmidt Road?
That's actually not under our jurisdiction at all.
It isn't? Well, then I'm glad I'm here.
That's a supervisor, supervisor meeting thing or office.
Yeah, you know what, you can always call the office and they would know if they have maybe in the works for that road.
Okay.
And then you can tell them, you know, what you're seeing. They're always interested in knowing what, you know, if something's going on that they need to know about. Did you say something more to them?
Uh, no, the trimming now, except the new holes. Uh, there's an outfit in there now, cutting down all the trees that would maybe compromise the integrity of the new lines. There's a fair amount of wood coming down in there. And there's several crews, big trucks. But it's just daily it's starting to get worse.
And Shubert is doing that?
It's an highlight, it's a company doing the work, but the building, it depends how.
I think I just think that's something.
I don't know every road in the township.
I mean, they still have air.
Uh, if you go up here to Wagner Salvage, Salvage Yard, hang a right on Pfeifer. Soon as you go down, across the bridge, it's off to the right, right there. Alright? I don't know, I think there's maybe a total of eight, nine residents on a, maybe a quarter mile road, if that. I'm not sure. So, Mike, would you be somebody that would be participating in this request on January 1st?
Well, I'm actually January 1st, yes, I believe it's the person on the in January.
Alright, well, maybe the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Yeah, no, I would encourage you, like Sylvia said, probably want to reach out to the office. Let them know the situation, like, I mean, obviously come to the board of supervisors' meeting. Sign if you want to speak and remember to the circus.
Okay.
You'll be given the record to the supervisors. And the roadmaster will be there. I mean, you'll probably, at least get better answers. The township office department will give you the answer. You'll be talking to the.
So, if I hear you correctly, if I did call the office to speak to them, they may already have something in the works. Correct? At that time, they might be able to share with us where it stands, maybe a forecast of activity.
Yes, if they're calling the office, you can almost talk to the roadmaster at the office. So, yeah, he's, he's not clearly sitting in the office all the time.
Right.
But if he knows that you've called, that's his responsibility.
Alright, well, then you know what, I'll place a call.
Yeah.
Alright.
That'd be your, that'd be your first step, wouldn't it?
Okay, that's fair enough.
When was that the meeting?
Uh, the, the third Monday at all. The supervisor, supervisor just meeting is the third Monday at all.
Third Monday next.
Alright.
Six o'clock, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, nine o'clock.
And is this all on the site? The Lancaster Township site?
Yes.
Okay, it's all on there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fair.
Agenda, meeting minutes, all of you, it's on the schedule.
Yeah, you can even see the past, the meetings and past agendas.
Okay, fair enough. We won't take up any more of your time, except for wishing all of you a happy Thanksgiving. Alright, unless you have anything for us? Huh? Want to get a pulse from your residents of Pfeifer or here we are. Alright, thanks for your time.
Take my congratulations, thanks for the surprise.
Really much.
I think I don't know. Especially logging taking the dress on.
They're 20 feet up. I figured they'd have to get a photo or something.
They have a tendency to not.
Just wondering, I know over in the countryside side, remove the existing hole for the new holes in the front free space. Because we find some years across. I don't know why they free space, but I imagine.
The problem they have with us is getting power off of the woods. Every time they have it goes down, they can't get their trucks and equipment there. They gotta send guys up in the ladder and fix it. I think they gotta pick their own. Put in all the power lines along the road. Quite probably 15 feet of cutting back all the trees. So, the headline in there, cutting all the trees and chipping everything. It's, it looks like a war zone right now.
And a lot being in my house.
So, they're doing this all before we get to running, right?
Yeah, they're breaking up the road too, isn't that a concern?
I don't know if they are, they might not. It's kind of weird seeing you break. It's a horrible road. Rumor has it we fly from France or something. Okay. Any more on here? So, any public comments on the agenda items, those extra folks out there tonight that are giving that chance? Okay, good. Cause I, I, did you want to comment?
Do you want to weigh the agenda or?
Something like, well, it is related to the work of the road. And I asked the law about this, we felt that this would be appropriate by bringing something like this up. Do you think it is law or not when you're out? So, a concern I have is you guys are in stages of development, or shouldn't be doing PRDs. One thing I like about, I mean, I'm a fan of PRDs, like PRDs by zoning districts. With little restrictions based on zoning district. But not only that, well, in the end, in a nutshell, what I mean is like in rural ones, if you were certain rural market areas, and then you get, and you have the more densely populated, like R2 or R3 or, you know, whatever, or multi-use area, it can be, you know, less restricted besides. But one thing I did, I just want to reiterate, I found this, this is from the beginning of this thing. It's very critical what you guys decide on doing here at this point in time. Cause there is plenty of case law on this where counties have been sued by the developers and residents because of PRD definitions either being not enforced well enough or PRD ordinances being so defined improperly that the citizens want it. You know, we're a county at once, and we're a very critical stage on a, if you look at this, but it is, it's really important what you're doing here right now. Cause PRDs, from what I understand, relatively new as far as case law does in Pennsylvania. And it seems like a common law court is, I guess I suppose, is better. But they're, they're checking, I don't know what it is when higher court changes the decision below court, but it's not unusual for. One example is a PRD was built, it was like, I don't know, 90 townhomes in an area in zoning. I think it was part of one that required it to have 20% free space. And the developers knew free space was, I guess, stormwater runoff, steep slopes, and something else. So, it wasn't in the idea, but they had find it in their ordinances that 20% free space was for recreational use for the residents of a PRD, specified that, and the types of recreational uses that were permitted. So, they ended up going to court in line because they said, can't use this land. Steep slopes or stormwater runoff stuff, and so they ended up, the, the development, you know, kept our decline. But there's, by the way, that's all, I just want to make sure you guys understand, you're really critical point when you get this PRD something. Is there any way we can get involved as far as what we currently have in place for them? Are we considering different PRDs by zoning district or don't know at this point? Cause it's too early in the day. I think it's too early, we just started gathering a few weeks ago, and then we went back to the salad. So, I think we'll be getting to it soon, next time, but we're not there yet, so.
But what I would recommend is put down some bullet points.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be a whole detailed, how do you put it, bullet points? The biggest thing we want to do is not miss something in our discussions. So, if you just list the half dozen bullet points, make sure you consider this, 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 this.
Okay.
And get it to us, we will incorporate those boxes and have a discussion process for sure. We just don't want to, the biggest fear we have is missing something so that it's just not, not covered and, and. No, we're just not bringing this up as I was saying, this was 20 years ago.
Yeah, I mean, as you're seeing now, I mean, it's a lot because we're like, hey, this sounds, hey, this sounds terrible. And we got, and now, you know, I realize things have changed a lot. The PR, you guys have the option to advise the supervisors, really detail all this stuff. So, yes, I'll put those together, thank you for this discussion. Okay, likewise. Alright, so administrative items. PRD copies, everybody, Sylvia, brought them for everybody. Matt's not with us tonight, I told him to get his at the township, so.
Okay, I'll take this.
Grab his.
Yeah, we should do it on calendar. Does he know any kind of, he's using one of their Thursday?
Um, I could let him know that, I just told him to have you at the township.
I don't know, I think we can.
And then the PRD assignments, most of you were here, very few got, and so I couldn't invite any of the walking, you guys don't mind. But I, I, I'm kind of still for you, the next township for everybody else. And so if anybody has any questions, concerns, don't like the area of expertise I cited too, you know, I tried to align it with what I thought everybody was good at, and it worked out pretty well. But if we don't have any comments on that, we'd like to just defer that until we start with the PRDs. Really, that's what we can do. Between now and, let's say, January, probably good for the time, we should go reading through all those and just start and say, hey, I like this. I like this, out of each one, we'll combine everything, we'll do one draft, and start all discussing.
Do you want to be like, a document form or we just, this is just a conversational process?
Ultimately, we're gonna end up wanting a document that we can, you know, patch everything together. And if you want to start out highlighting services, is there any way we can get this in a PDF?
And if I scan, you know? Cause reason, it's exactly what we're at that. The first parts that we like would be copy and paste and not after, oh, I like this.
Yeah, I don't want to have a big timing of this stuff.
Right, I could, I could probably go online and get some of them, or at least those two, and then convert them.
I just, for me, that would be.
Yeah, most of all, I didn't know, but we did.
Yeah, I said, I didn't know that everybody probably would have watched, but those, I don't feel that those are completely, you can convert what I said. Cause like this one, I think I only had a copy. I might be able to buy a copy and run it by us. We'll look, we'll see what we can do.
This will be.
We do, okay. So, some of these.
These PDFs are about a whole lot for.
Probably.
Well, no.
Yeah, it's almost gonna have to be.
Just, yeah, if we can find a way.
We'll see what we can do.
So, most of these you can scan and go to work.
I don't know, so some are scanning, or there's a lot of, the character recognition. It may be, it may be some pretty cruddy, but at least it's good enough for crack based, just.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe thanks for 2025, so we have another 20th, which is our regular meeting. I guess that's next, our next regular meeting. That's two days to go for Thanksgiving. Is there anything wrong with the agenda that you?
They're thinking.
It could be, so we still don't, there is, there is.
They're already.
So, you're gonna need at least four people, I hope it's holiday, we, anybody know who can't make it?
Okay, so, yeah, we have that one, we have to do that, correct?
Mm-hmm. Law cabinet, we're, I think that they're going to be too, the way that.
Okay, they want to want or does it actually have to?
Yeah, they're gonna give us an extension, they're gonna, we'll just be going to the 1000.
Yeah, I'd already told them that probably we might not be able to extend it, but if they don't, we're gonna have to act on it. I think their time's up, January 8th.
So, if we have that and they have to come back, then we can. Yeah, if they don't do anything, we can fight, start over.
Yeah.
So, if they ask for extensions, then we're going to, other than paying the fees, okay, really isn't an issue. Well, extensions is everybody's, is, 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 is there anything else besides? Uh, the curative amendment, uh, you will see that if you have a copy of the proposed ordinance, I'll get to the acting meeting. And I'll need one as well, based on the findings of fact, and you will have that to make your recommendation. Okay, so, just so I understand the process, the supervisor did not agree with our recommendation. Curative, that's correct?
We basically, we sent it back to the county, and the county had some suggestive language just to make things a little more uniform. Um, but the other clarification is we, the density is 3.25, what do you guys rate for it?
Correct.
So, the board of supervisors is, the most likely to, what is the recommendations is 3.25 density. So, you will see, as you're in amendment, that as you've already seen it, with 3.25, plus some clean-up, clean-up language from the county. The job of it, so that's the language, that's the significant.
The 3.25 is what currently is the township, is that correct? No?
The old, the old PRD ordinance was three. With, it was three, but you could increase that substantially by doing certain things. Needing more open space, you know, having wider roads, having wider sidewalks, you can increase that substantially.
So, that's how they came up with the 3.25?
I don't know.
I didn't know, that was based on what they were proposing?
It was, it was a little bit less than what they wanted and what they were proposing, but it was a balance between that and your ordinance.
It's still substantially more than the current ordinance, cause I guess probably address this.
Okay. Since we're working on solid as a PRDs now, and we, wouldn't it be probable for us to even go back to curative amendment and take it to an extra step and tie it all right? We're working on now.
Maybe.
That's too long.
The other thing about that, the other thing is not bad, but, but that would make it a township's requirement. And then you can't do any changes to your ordinance. Like 18 months? For a long time, and if you want to change our ordinance, so, yeah, we can, but we can change it.
Okay, when, when we do our stuff, it can be totally different from this.
You just can't do it.
It's up to the next one, we know the law.
Correct.
Right, just based on their request, and that's it.
So, I saw another question, so, why does it need to connect us?
Because there were changes, and it had, you had not seen the draft that is going to be advertised for adoption. It's different.
So, we mentioned we may have.
We still need to make a recommendation, right? There will be another public hearing, um, to come back about the county. So, it wasn't exactly who saw, so you need to take it.
And so we.
Not that.
We made a recommendation on what's reserved in front of us, and we can't often change that, etc.
On the new, on the one that you know, you say, you can do whatever recommendation you choose.
It's a change from what you saw, so it's going to be in the process. So, it's the only issue. And it's, and a lot of its terminology, it wasn't consistent with the ordinance, what they proposed. So, had to do a cleanup, so we did more. And it really wasn't a whole lot of changes, but it's just.
Said some, some changes doesn't.
Some we've got here, but luckily it brought up issues with the existing ordinance that need to be fixed when we go to this process.
And when you say back to our county, that's part of the plan, isn't it?
Yes.
I actually, I actually.
They really do it bad, so much bad.
They do that.
They have it nicer, we have.
Two people.
Okay, most of the time, I submit, some things go wrong, man, because.
Always.
It's very true, yeah.
We, we never got it, yeah, you're right.
So, it's a surprising.
They're really looking at something, they are, they're really gripped up, I mean, they're, they are, it actually recommended in places where you could get grants and things.
So, is that what you, you're retired, which you, you're.
There's new people.
New people.
Two of those old school, right. So, what can we as planning officials learn from this process? Did we do something? Did we miss something? You, you did, your existing ordinance terminology needs fixed. Which, when you go to zoning, we'll need some person to fix all of that. You, when you say you're gonna use, and so, there's this terminology you're gonna match, right now they don't match. So, if somebody says I want to do this, you may not have it in your zoning ordinance, and if you do it, you know where. Or reinterpret whether, you know, what that is, what best use fits, and stuff like that. So, that's why some of the changes, I think here, at least some of the vision, we're gonna streamline it, so you're gonna have a table that says this is allowable, instead of having the same table records in three different sections of your zoning ordinance. You're gonna have one table with all of the districts that say you can and can't do, to make that easier, so then you don't have that issue. So.
We have the same table for our line and for the village, and you do that same table, and there's issues with that table. So, we can fix that when we do the board. So, we learned that, you know, from this whole process, is what needs to be fixed anymore.
Okay.
But we can't fix that.
So, uh. That's the regular, we're gonna have people here for that, that's good. Seventh night's a workshop, that shouldn't be an issue in December 3rd, a regular meeting. But cancel unless we have. If we do, we'll move it, I, I don't know if that, that's gonna affect anybody, that's not really. What's the date, the last, the summer 3rd? Something between Christmas and. Yeah, my guess is you're not, the only other plan that would come in would be potentially the law cabinet, I don't know the opinion of the issue there, after the comments made by the event, so. But we can look at that and, and take a feel, if somebody does submit something, you can see when you can just remove it. But that last couple of weeks in December is tough. Tough time of the year. We have planning boards that purpose of don't do meetings in December or November because of that. So, I don't think it'll be a problem.
So, you're saying it's good for now, the next official meeting day?
Although, yeah, although we don't know.
Yeah, can't go next day anymore.
Okay. Good.
And I'm pretty sure there isn't such, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, maybe, what was it?
Twenty.
Right, and, and you know what, that's a good place to choose.
Twenty twenty-six, thanks, just kind of laying that out because we talked about moving. A workshop is to be different day rather than a Tuesday. And based on new program, that's really, it was the first Monday, and it's the last Tuesday, so. What I like about that is it's Monday, it's not official meeting, it's a workshop, but it's Tuesday, but it was an official meeting. The only.
So, Barry, you had a comment on it somewhere?
First of all.
September 7th, it's like.
So, we may try to do that, the problem is, I don't know what the schedule is, but you know, there's other people that use this term. We'll wait till we get closer to that meeting and even see if we, we may not even have a workshop that, that month, right? When we were done.
I would think, why don't we just pick something out, we know we're not gonna do that thing.
Well, yes, but one.
Well, you say, why don't we pick something else, we could cancel that something else, anyway.
Yeah, you can cancel that re-advertising, you can't, if you do that, you then, there's a cost associated with that.
So, if we know we're not gonna do this other, is the second Monday an issue?
We're. We're gonna go back to my other master sheet that has one. Let's try to go back to the eighth, next day.
That would have been our normal day.
I don't.
Second Tuesday is for me, you're not ready to talk.
Okay.
But not everyone can make it all these.
Um, what about the 15th?
Well, yeah.
You know what, let me go back and look at my master sheet and see if there's a date there that, that everybody would get in their report. See if we can find a date that works for it. When, when I would pick the first Monday of March, because it's collective, we're.
Well, you did a good job.
But it's like, maybe we're, the first is September, and Tuesday. Oh, yeah, let me look.
Yes.
That's the only place I have.
It's the next year.
You could also do something like, or the first of August.
It's a workshop, yeah, it's all.
It's a workshop. So, you could do something like that at the workshop. So, you still have your workshop meeting in between the two.
It's just seeming like there were residents that will go there, they either have to be Monday or Tuesday. Seriously, so, that's all I know, okay.
It can be.
It can be the third.
You're doing the last Tuesday, it's supposed to be the fourth Tuesday. Is there a few months to do it, like, June?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna do the last Tuesday, March, June, March. It doesn't matter, it's almost, I know.
Let's leave it as, as it is, which is what it is.
Yeah, the party's the last Tuesday.
That works, so that is the last Tuesdays that we're doing. And board of supervisors is the third Sunday.
Correct.
Alright, um, we'll clean this up maybe next month, or then, uh, next meeting. Will you post this on the website?
Um, of course, we just have to put it on the website, and then it will be, um, on the, it has to advertise, and ask them, yeah. It will also be on the website, yeah.
So, when, when is this gonna, is this gonna be done next week, supervisor or next month?
Next month.
Next month.
Okay, so you still have it for the next meeting, right? You know about the day.
For next official meeting, you could actually, what it's, what it's.
Right, exactly, because you have to go the other day, right? So, yeah, you have to go the next day. And then they can appropriate it there, right?
No, we'll jabber, 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 26th, it's shorter from the other meeting, so.
That's the, historically.
That's not, almost a day.
I want to do the evening.
This just needs to, to port the meeting short, so come December, as long as it goes in December.
Okay. Well, that brings us. Well, that brings us back to, um, the whole business, because we've moved up some of this. To the Salvo, that I brought, uh, we get, uh, we have some coffee stock.
Well, last, I have no, we stopped. Page twenty-five.
M.
M.
The end of forty-four. The end of forty-four.
It started on page forty-five, so. So, my comment is, M-one, today. Because I don't see voting, there's much more than they believe in.
It's still not, I couldn't find it either.
Oh, we have to vote.
I'm like, where is it?
Okay, okay, got it. Yeah, it's making it consistent.
Yeah.
Okay. Next comment, the day that I had with Mike, on M-three.
Yeah, you better comment.
And my comment there was, we talked about making it three hundred, that was everywhere. Any issues, concerns, you wanna read through that?
So that's intention.
What's the first thousand in that paragraph, just to be consistent with her?
It is such a material, like, especially if you look at it, because I was like, oh, my. So two is Arturio and Collector Streets, three is Local Streets. I read that as different.
No, no, I, I was looking, there's thousands reaching twice in number three.
I like saying better.
Well, what section do you mean?
Um, page forty-five, M-three.
When is ours, I have one of this.
Do you see a need for that? I'm trying to picture them myself. The, uh, the three hundred makes sense, because two local streets in development. You don't want lots to be of a hundred and fifty feet wide, makes sense, like, two hundred and fifty to three hundred, approximately. Makes sense, now, opposite side of the street, and you have a thousand feet away. That can just prevent it, that might work for me. You can just totally prevent it, it'll help, but you tell, you might interfere, therefore, you didn't do anything.
Only that would be the issue, is you don't want, you would want potentially development to come out at the same intersection. Because you would wanna, you would wanna cross as opposed to what I said.
Yeah, I think that thousand almost has to be consistent for three hundred. Because if you've got a load in development, come right, right down here, and you put two loads this way, for three hundred feet apart. You want the exact same thing on the other side of the road. You're gonna need three hundred feet there to. Because otherwise, this is gonna say, no, you can't put the line, you can't put the other kids, you can't do it. So they're almost both of those have to be.
Yeah, I mean, it would only prevent you from having another stop on the road coming out of the cross. It would push that intersection further away, so you could line it up across, but you'd have to look at the next one to a thousand feet away.
Even if it's a matter of local time cross.
Sure. If you're stone transfer, you wanted to put a road there, you would potentially, you couldn't put a road. Within a thousand feet, or depending on how you read it, three hundred feet before the next road comes. It would be a new road, so you can probably prevent you from putting a road in that location, generally, that's a problem. You just don't wanna stop.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, if I built the developer, totally go with nothing to, put a rock slate, you put a road in. On the west side of the road, you can put two streets for three hundred feet apart. But this first line says opposite that, and then you might run into road opposite side of that street, I have a thousand feet away. Which doesn't make sense. It's all inside a lot of development, you've got two intersections, three hundred feet apart, that are pure intersections. Who leaves that line? You would want them to align. You wouldn't wanna say, oh, you're out on one side of the street, and not on the other. These roads are not on the same side.
It's really a fly, this new development, which is an existing one. You know, in Salt Harbor, you live in, or any other, you wouldn't want another road. Then you would want it to be a thousand feet away, so you don't want a road that could be there three hundred feet away. If you had scenic ridge, and Salt Harbor's coming together, you wouldn't want a new road that's three hundred feet down the road, you're gonna say.
But is that a local street?
That would be a local street.
Of course, so.
Yes. So I can see where you want it extended to a thousand, you don't want too many spurs.
No, I, I can understand that, but I can also understand the side outside.
But if two street, if you know, then you wouldn't definitely fly.
Why?
Or you would want the closure.
You would want, yes, but this would prevent you from doing the closure.
How do you word it to apply to something? Outside of. How, how do you word it?
Uh, well, because it could be, as you say, you say, existing half the road, but it's based development.
It would be existing.
It would be existing, unless, unless it comes in as part of the development, then you would say, okay, this is a lot. Even if it's based departments, it's true that.
Yeah, it's still something, you already have, even if it stays, you have the overall plan.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a list of what roads are local, or which ones are territorial?
I don't think I've made that definition. My, we need to, for a couple other reasons, actually.
I don't think we do.
I don't think we do.
I could see something like, you're on a forty's town. You don't want three hundred feet between all intersections.
You do not.
Okay, that makes sense. If you're in a hundred acre wide, I'd say no problem, three hundred, three hundred twenty. Even if that road connects and what is kind of all the way across to someone else. Internally, that's still fair to do, makes sense. But what's the difference between the two roadways? These roads are probably not local road. So it's.
Local, yeah.
Now, your road is pretty worse than that. But, um, the, the point is, if, if.
So, so you would put another, you would put another street, we had a deep, which that.
What if that's the, what if that's the second exit that comes to the plan? Thousand feet to get an entrance out of road, that's up to you.
I don't know how to work it. In a proper scope, at the same time. I totally get the concept. I also understand that if you develop, you want.
Right.
This is supposed to be quicker view.
So I'll come up with, I'll come up with a revised paragraph, either like defining how the roads are, or see how, what would work to make that work. So it would be better to plot, you know, projected paragraph, if you.
Are they drawing now? Probably not.
Wouldn't help with, I think, the definition of how they look, the roads are, you know, you can, you can.
Okay, let's back up to two then. Because two is similar. What is White's Town? Is White's Town a collection?
Like I said, I don't know what we've made of that discussion.
I'm lying, I mean, you could.
You hear, yeah, I was.
There's Arturio Street. And Highway. The reason I'm asking a question is, it seems to me, White's Town's pointing out a road.
Okay, it's not Arturio, I wouldn't think, it's not the real Arturio. So what's the definition to?
Arturio is, it's almost Route nineteen, but Route nineteen doesn't count because it's state.
Well, here's what you said, what's Arturio Street slash Highway, okay? It's a street designed and constructed primarily for inter-community travel, here in large areas of traffic high speeds. Including all roads caused by its main and secondary highways at a departmental destination.
Is considered what, Arturio?
Is considered Arturio Street slash Highway.
So if Route nineteen fits that definition, the ninety's in Arturio, because we have a first station.
H O P, you said your version of that. But would White's Town, is White's Town an inter?
It's.
Okay.
No, you're, you're right, you're right, it is, but then what's a park?
Well, here, let me tell you. A street which provides internal traffic circulation within the township, and/or connects developed areas with Arturio Streets. Including the platform entrance or circulation streets at a residential development, and all streets within industrial and/or commercial subdivisions or developments. That's a collection Street.
So Scott Ridge would be in Arturio?
Yeah.
Scott Ridge, okay.
Yeah.
So is your really on, so White's Town is Arturio, Scott Ridge, whatever roads in White.
I don't know, because I don't really put it together, yeah, because you could say Stone Church, because it connects the whole way.
I'm not sure Scott Ridge would be, because it does not actually connect to different communities. Scott Ridge is entirely within the county, that's what I'm talking about.
So Arturio has to, has to go through a different town, oh. Connect to, to Tuesday, so let's say.
Yeah, yeah. Good point, yeah.
I think what we need to do is define the roads and township, I don't know where they are. So then.
Which we need to do anyway for a parking.
By the definition you just read, it seems to me that the main road in the development is a collector. So Timber Ridge Drive is a collector.
It's not local.
Right.
And then the question.
I just questioned, but according to that definition.
The goal is a drive, which is correct, spark drive means Timber Ridge, which is just so, a vocal.
But the definition says it's collector.
It's local. Local Street. A street which provides primary access to residential, industrial, commercial, and/or agricultural areas within the township.
Okay, wow.
Yeah, that doesn't say that's it. Is that can be ever.
Well, because my, my point is, if you consider Timber Ridge a collector, now, everything we talked about with three hundred feet doesn't apply inside of the development anymore. Which is so, it should, so, either definitions need to adjust, or lighting needs to adjust. And in a way, the reason I'm bringing that thousand up in number two, was there's a property that we can't. Can't think what property is there. East Line Castor, his wife's kind, they intersect. There's a property back behind those houses there, it's, it's access is off, East Line Castor is this way, and on some, oh, it's Palat Property, that's it. The Palat Property is something else, and it has a right of way coming in just up from East Line Castor, way less than a thousand feet. According to our ordinance, you could not develop that property at all. Because you can't get into it in less than, in more than a thousand feet from either direction, that intersection. You could just not make that property undeveloped. So. I, I, I have a position here, I'm just saying.
Well, yeah, the wrong step, because like, the property across from Butler Recreatory Meet may not be a thousand feet between. Property of the property edge, and somebody for the developer, it's most likely those two entrances, again, you may not be able to do that, so we need to look at that.
Even all the property.
True. Huge problem.
All of it.
A lot of properties actually, I think, may not have that. But the time, so I have a question.
Little question, I think.
Okay, a little question. So if, because we also have to work on the right way, or, uh, we're taking that one sentence out of the subject cards. And we're gonna stand our part here.
It's a standalone one.
Standalone. So if we go through M mark, because I think we need to do it anyway, local streets, Arturio Streets, Collector Streets. To, so that we know where part of the unit at, on which kind of streets. So we go through all of our streets, and do lists, M mark, or which, which category they would be in. But then, of course, we add streets, we don't have to like redo and work it, right?
I want to, I think what we can do is establish the ordinance, so that it can be updated by our solution.
Okay. Because I would hate to go through the whole process.
Like, maybe do the, the parting as well, and not, uh, we can confirm.
Yeah, I would just hate to go through the whole process of doing a, a, and then need ordinance, because that's a hearing, and that's the development, it's other stuff.
No, it's not a standard, because it's not a common, or it's all about portion here.
Okay.
It should be, but the standalone would be part of the ordinance together.
Okay.
But even, even beyond that, when the road is dedicated, you can't, allowing who can have dedication, simple code, dedicate as tax.
What?
And you just, every new road coming in, you designate it right by the sign. What kind of road is?
Yeah, we have some other ordinance that says, and newly empowered.
Yeah, you definitely.
So there's three, there's Arturio, Collector, and Local, that's three.
That's three definitions we have here. Which is probably the only definition you need, just new definition.
So somebody, somebody, it'll be somebody's job to go through all the.
I'm not sure the state does.
Okay, yeah.
I think it would be really hard to define these very, 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 so. Too many variables, and I think you're better off designing the roads, having a list of those, and then it can change, I don't know. The development's more developed, the whole traffic studies come in, and use, times more, use of, use to, you can change it.
And it could be just, instead of even having these definitions in there, could we say, per the.
You want to.
Yeah, we have that definition, I was just saying, then we can still, I think, reference the list of roads, you know. Which would make it very clear, make it clearer.
Who just sort of takes a lawyer's, that would know that. Challenging the definition, and working with her.
Yeah, but it's a challenge, I mean.
And according to your current reading. There's a lot of Arturio roads. Even something like Delacore, becomes an Arturio road, which is just so. But it is, it connects to Crab, through Township, it's a whole river. Yeah, Crab Run, you've got Swain Hill, you've got a whole bunch, and you said, you got your.
So there's Swain Hill and Jackson Light, that's two hills, but it, yeah, so.
Those are, according to definitions, are all Arturio brands.
Yeah.
So much for.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's fix that.
Okay, I have no other, uh, notes on page forty-five. Forty-six, um, I had a comment on a site track. So Tom, where did these numbers come from? Because I, I know originally, this all came back to you, the original Township Site Track was just so, it was almost doing this hundred foot, hundred foot of site track. Regardless of its control, and control area, etc. And there is a difference between control run, and control area sections, and it's a difference based on speed, right? They all come in the way for site tracks, so, where did these, I believe it was an actual reference.
Okay. It was a federal highway.
But these would still be based on certain speed, should we be referencing that, or should we be referencing the standard? And you're saying it's a standard. Because whether it's, you know, forty-five mile an hour road, or thirty-five mile, it's like, I can change, because, so.
We can, we can reference the. We can, we can reference the formula, we can reference the standard, we just do that.
Because I think that'd be better than the actual numbers over here. And the uncontrolled, how many uncontrolled area sections really exist? Any existing, any new road designation requires control. I can't think of any.
Uh, I per, I don't know if that's in, if that's in like very. I wonder, ask the, because I think it's asked for, just very four hundred, like that's a lane.
It's a lane, and there's no stop sign.
I think so. Or just, Crab Run, one, there's.
But Crab Run, no, Crab Run is charged in two little. And it's controlled in a direction, there's a stop sign on little, down. So the main, I think Crab Run and Little is continuous, and there's a stop sign coming in, off the road. Say, look, there, right around to that intersection, so we.
But if it's controlled, so you can go this way, a lot of towns just picture it, so you come down this way, or you go this way. You get Little Way, is there stop sign, you know?
I don't know, where, where's your local crab, maybe in the last of the little, correct?
And there is, there is that thing, yeah.
Where you got Little Triangle, there's a stop sign right there, to turn and back. So. My, my point is, no new development will have a control, and I don't think there's any, I'm not saying it's gonna happen. I think we leave it, not just, just some matter, but I don't.
You know, that's a good definition.
No, I, I think it could leave it in, if something happened, that's, that's.
Okay, Tom, I have a question. So lane, our driveway is like, Crab Run, because two houses back there. So lane does not have the V F control.
So a lane isn't included in our definitions at all, so a local road is not.
Correct.
Alright, so, okay, you don't have a kind of stop sign came in your driveway?
No, it's, we can talk.
I don't.
You just have to be smart enough to stop.
If you were Jackson, and you put a stop sign up, Steve would be like, fuck it. All those lanes have stop signs, remember that, because it's grown from there.
I'd say, why did you all do that, like, fuck us? Jackson.
I was just curious on the whole. Okay, eight forty seven. Oh, reverse curves. Okay, Tom, go through this again.
For this, it's the test curve, that's independent.
Yeah, but what's minimum transit? Distance, why?
Maybe it's the curve offset from both of those curves. You have a curve, and it is a curve coming, you have a curve that turns this way, so we have to plan to go this way, plan to go this way.
So is it all?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I got. So the curve on Scott Ridge, as you consider the reverse.
Right.
Curve.
So tangent intersection, you're saying is. That distance, right? Correct. Distance between those two.
Right.
Tangent intersection, curve.
So faster you go.
That distance, longer than.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I have a chance, I can, okay. Question is, is the language good enough, or just for quick diagram, and.
Yes.
I'll say, when I got a, minimum transit, I had no quote math, that's why I ask you, so if this.
Because we could put transit, put T on, and then do a diagram on T.
So any of the curves in the township currently, depending on, I guess, is there any curves in the township currently, depending on what, if they have become an arterial or collector, or that, or what?
I don't know that we have any that are that.
Sure.
Okay.
So. Where you see the, the S Ben sign, and where we have those, I don't know that we have any.
Any of that's on this.
I mean, I don't know.
Only you're.
We don't, we don't.
Sure.
The road, yes, but. I think it's the best, best I can do with, right, the sign.
I guess, just a question I got, let's say, if, let's say, if the street is, you know, it's a hundred and fifty feet, but we determine where you're going through all the streets, and it's an arterial, then, then what, what do we?
Does it count grandfather in?
Well, yeah, I think it would be grandfather in, yeah, that's very easy.
Okay, I, I.
But again, the kids, it's, I'm just, really, why is it?
That's what I, that was the next question.
Development, and said, hey, do this, do this, as our standard, you know?
Now, does it have to be a certain amount of a curve? I mean, can just a little, a little winding, or is it?
It would be a dash curve.
Okay.
It's essentially when you're in your brakes, but again, it's gonna depend on the type of road and speed, so. Low, low road, it's only five, so all the, you have much issue. What do you want, actually?
Great, what is one of the, I drew up there, um.
Oh, but Sheeber, that is a long one.
I didn't think of Sheeber's.
You're speaking to, uh, you know, right, um. Wait, there's.
How can they?
They can, yeah.
Well, that's, that's not a nest curve.
Well, if you continue along, just have Sheeber's, the other end of that.
Oh, I don't even think, well.
Put it slow.
Okay, I don't even consider on, on East Lancaster that. That's, uh.
It's probably on the hill.
Side pipe.
And on the, and side pipe.
Yeah.
There we go.
But I was thinking of curving.
Thomas, that curve.
That's right, up there.
Yeah. Right, north of us.
Yeah. That's right.
But I've been, never thought of that.
Nice curve, there, eight, eight.
It's more on Sheeber's.
Yeah, skinny, skinny Thomas, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That, that does have.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
And you do guys, I mean, you can't go barefoot to that, too fast.
If it's that small enough, it would need to stay in the business, so it won't be far.
Yeah, okay.
Forty eight. Trying to read through my notes, reading the section.
So I have a question about private street, what's the difference between a private street and a lane? It's just, private streets mostly, just a house or two houses back.
That's right, and that's where the lord and says, you can't have more than two homes on the pasture.
Okay.
Now, there are some that exist that grandfather in, but anything new, it's limited to, and typically a headache, and you want to limit. You wouldn't want to create, you know?
I, I, I guess, what is the difference between a private street?
They are, they're, that's basically the same. And it's, it's over, that's all.
Okay.
Somebody today said, hey, I want to do this, nuts bomber, said, okay, we're gonna sell this, we're just gonna split it into two lots, and do one here, a house here, and one here, it's a private lane. Said, okay, you're a little happy.
Yeah, that would be really hard to handle.
At, at one time, that would be the issue to do.
We had two houses back there, pretty much, we had a Scott Ridge address, and then nine on one lane, that's when it became swag lane, and one house had a house number, and I was, that is a house number. That's, that's.
But it's. So today, they wouldn't have lanes, it'd be parks.
Well, definitely it's a private street, but you can name it whatever, whatever.
Well, my, my definition here is, there are legitimate cases where private streets are reasonable, even with a lot of homes on it. Treesdale, for example, has many communities are private. Gay communities are often private, they have a gay community, that they do their own snow maintenance and everything else. The roads are never dedicated to the township, they're private, branded by whatever association is managing, looking at that place. Um, I, I pointed the example here, a community we built in Treesdale, called Apple Ridge, and it doesn't meet any of these requirements, it's got eighty, eighty condo units in it, um, and it comes in on a private drive, and has a big private hoop, and then back out, and there's like twenty quads on this whole thing, all private. Private, gay private, the whole bit, and it's a very reasonable way to build a community. So. That, that's quite different than if you're trying to claim that you have two houses.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I think it's a legitimate case to allow those, but how do you allow that, distinguish that from the no maintenance agreement? To, to, to a private lane?
Well, I mean, again, if you're looking at this as any community, or an extension of any new, so if it's a existing private lane, and say you get away with it, the requirement, they would have to have recorded notes saying, who can maintain this, all of that, and down.
Sure, but that's not great, but.
It is, where, um, it says that they shall have, um, well, it's referenced on one of your form, where it says, private road notice, that notices, everybody signs off on, saying they're participating on, who's only maintaining the road. So it's defined, it's being created, who owns that, problems with them yourself a lot. And when somebody else comes in, it's a real family, somebody else comes in, it's a lot of, and then you have a legal document, so if, yes, you're all, it does. And it's just, and it's few things, say, okay, we're, we're using, we're not, we need this file.
No, but, but green, I, I hate when it's, when it's condo owners, if they're like, and, or. The amount of condo association.
Doesn't unless, for some reason, they don't maintain it, they cover the townships, it's to be followed. The townships as well, it's on our roads, and that's where I think we see, we have, we have a couple of townships where they, they have private developments. It's every three or four years, they come in, because it's made them seem down and down. So they say, you, can you take this road over, or, or, or standard?
It's not.
No, and then it goes away, catch more, and three, four years, it can, but it's just a pay for the township. But if you want to change it to.
And I see, I see pros and cons to both, I, I, our Apple Ridge community, and there is not fifty feet between the buildings opposite sides of the street, so you couldn't even do a right-of-way to fifty feet, we would be on that line. But it's a good point, I have a single, okay, big community, um, and it works well, but I understand. I definitely understand the issues that can come up with these things if they're not well about.
And we even get them down, whenever a developer builds development, and the township is not taking care of the roads yet. We get tons of call, why isn't the township doing my group, well, because it hasn't taken care of the township yet. I mean, everything, and it happens, every single development, it feels like, and I just, I mean, if you're gonna make this private, if you're going to allow private search, why can't they be helped to township standards, even though they're private? Why not?
I like that, yeah. My question is always, if this is, I'm just saying, I was out of a, of, of, that's a, a few, few straight, or, or, you have, or, that sounds like that thing's really high.
Well, wait, it's, they're all, they're always done in the context of a P R P, and they're always done in the context of green space, so. Close to the thing, and then you have to solve more green space, so, I, I don't, I don't think it conflicts on the density requirements at all, whatever is density requirements, or eventually can be, it just ends up giving more green space.
On the way before, I mean, he, this protects it, and then for some reason, there's usually a merit, if you want to apply my value, and come to the supervisor, they could decide, so, I, right?
See, maybe they could, but they never will. That, that's, because this is, this is so far out, this is an imperious issue, this is a conceptual design thing, so, it's just, and I see merit both ways, I definitely, and I definitely see what you're saying in terms of, I've seen it before too, someone goes crap in development, I know one over in Jackson, they expense homes in the crappy development, they didn't build the road to township back, none of it, none of that comes up. Actually, never accepted the road, and all of these owners are stuck with, how do we get this road maintained? And I know several times, they come back and say, if they did, if they, the answer is no, no, no.
And if it's not, if it's not at least the township standards, there's no, if they can't, can't build it the township standards, then you're not. Because there's no way, even if they wanted to, the township could. So I think, making it be, there's a deep wire, making it still follow these rules.
It's, one of the, one of the reasons, like, in Apple Ridge, the roads are intentionally narrower than the twenty-four, twenty-six foot cart, they're intentionally narrower, more than a twenty-foot length size. Make it cozy, you make it cozy for the community, you putting the houses closer to the, to the actual street itself, we're only, I don't know, ten, at most fifteen feet off of the road. So you have a twenty-foot road, and you've got, say, twelve and twelve.
Where people come.
In a, oh, there's parking, there's parking areas designated by the community, so if you get parking, you've got parking, parking in the, in the development.
First, let the road discourage.
Well, I'm struggling with it both ways, because I love the economy, I love walking down there, but I also definitely understand that it falls, and it's not that right, I can definitely see that.
We even imagine having the whole, the township does have community. That'd be great, but I just don't see it lasting, and then you see the office, getting the more of the calls, and then, and again, it can be done to what's built, and the taxpayer do this.
Yeah.
That, that's the downside, but then you have, it's, could be written away that it's, because a condo is, you're only building, you're not.
Your own inside, right, your inside.
It's different.
Everything else is on the, you know.
Because you don't, in the beginning, the setbacks, you don't have, the same setback, because you're only building, you're already, you know, to this lot. So, that's, that's the only way where I would see, you could essentially apply it to make a difference, in a common association, you potentially have a private road, because it's undifferent. Also, make the private roads, touch it, standards, minimizing, you know, that's, you know, the more filled, the more character, I love, I love the township player, says in my words, you know, that's, you just, you want to rest with the player, and she's stable.
Wait, um, we heard Epcun's stuff. Or his, what's the one that's got right down the road here?
Seaver.
Yeah. Is that all public, virgin?
Yes.
Okay, because Epcun is a role. Okay, cause FCon is a role, tries to make their communities private, as a general rule.
Anybody else have a opinion? Want to accommodate or discourage?
Now, I, 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 I totally understand what you're saying, I love what we built, you don't know how to enforce it out of it.
That's, plus you're applying it as a department separate, separate, I mean, it's being a condo association that happens there. And then the difference, they're not, it's gonna be more difficult. And it would be defined, then you'd have a certain number of units, in this case, it'd be at least thirty-nine units, to get away from the private road, which is usually being pulled from units. That is the way you know, it's a different.
And you want to have a reason, and so you do, you make it, they don't, but.
But I think you could do that.
And I, I can tell you.
I, I can see your, you did a good job of building.
Yeah.
The problem is, there's no guarantee that you're still gonna be able to break the, build it out. And, and, and I don't want to comment something back, but you're, you're right. And that, I struggle, I think I struggle with that, and as much as I love what we built, I'm actually.
There's no guarantees.
To say that, there's no, there's.
There's no guarantees, whoever would be the builder, it's gonna be the same.
I'm, I'm inclined to go with what you're saying. Make it all public, dedicated roads, meaning township standards. And if, you know, several years from now, if somebody comes in and really starts pushing, they really want to do this, we can revisit the whole subject and change it. I just don't know how to write it now, that protects the township enough, to achieve what we did, say.
Now, what did you have to do, that's Adams Township?
That was, that's in Adams.
So you had to go through with the, the supervision and everything, get that, or?
There was nothing to go through, it's all just allowed. So we could present your plan, tell us exactly what you're gonna do, and we implemented it beautifully times in Adams Township, and other places. It's always, always in the context of a condo. But I've also seen exactly refusing. Some of these places, not ours, but some of these places, get to the point, the roads, I, for example, I have no trails, and I, they got the private lanes behind the, uh, the houses. And they don't push on the township to maintain those private lanes, and, no, they're, they're private, they're not public roads, township's not maintaining this, they were built like crap. They were all worked in the first two years, and even more bad, it was just, it was bad.
Well, that's the number one complaint to get is, why didn't the township reduce, try to develop a road that would be more common area than any, because they just, you cut their costs, and they did minimal approach, and look for what that's done. It's gonna be very moving, and you do that kind of stuff in the first.
They go to like a driveway, not like a road, that's basically what happens. So, I guess I'm inclined to.
Yeah.
So, then what do we need to change, or what do we, do we need to change?
Just need to keep it the way that, I mean, that's.
Well, especially the direction between driveway, right, or shared driveway and private.
But the street is just two people on the same driveway.
So there is no, like, shared driveway, so we talk about, you push it to private street.
Correct. But it's traditionally cheaper lot, they kept subdivided, family, and they kept subdividing, or wanting to subdivide, it's typically old. It's usually a bigger lot, but they just don't have access, front lines, they split it, cause it's lost its air, so it's split in the rear, and it can't give enough. Splitting, you can do a flat lot, and you're able to use it.
Okay, um. Still on that queue, one B. Private streets should end with a quote.
No, I promise, I gave it a end with a quote. I see that in the quote, I, I don't have.
But it's nice to have something to turn around, you don't, you get turned around somewhere.
With a waterway or that thing.
But it's a mess.
The fly button.
Well, a fly button would give you a second, it's a dedicated lot with access to the road, so it wouldn't get private.
It's a single drive.
Single drive.
It's just a long drive.
All right, I have a mental, there's, I have a mental project, like, what property, what, here. Do you wanna pull the sack over here?
Somewhere where the turn signal, you want to pull the sack, so that you can turn around on that area. And you've had, you have alternate cul-de-sacs, a hammerhead, something, somewhere where you can turn around, so you're not going down a lane, and backing somewhere, so it was on, it was down.
I think, yeah.
They don't want to go anywhere. So, they have to do something to the question. And I don't know, you, you said it's cul-de-sac, and that was, you don't have, I don't think they'd have any means to turn around and do something, but another township would put in smaller cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, I can think of a couple of ones where there's no cul-de-sac, you have, again, has everyone turned around and dropped it?
Every time you're on, where am I?
It's the doggy grass.
So, if this would be, this would be for new, new ones, you're, that's the only one, you're, you're.
Right. Right, so again, it could be rather, private lanes.
Yeah, it does have to be paid here.
Right. It's private, so.
I mean, for any deal with that, we have to, and it doesn't seem necessary.
Would we allow some, if they don't have enough to do with the cul-de-sac, cause there's probably, we, for, oh, what about just like a turnaround? A hammerhead, something else, they would need to come up with something, we've done that.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be acceptable. Just some means to turn it around, you know, or, 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 you know, to the leader, the boss, no, we're gonna push this one side.
They need somewhere to make that work, or through some of these, or.
Oh, you're redoing that?
I'm trying to read it for a second. No, I think the leader's a cul-de-sac, and our standard, you do a, a hammerhead is an alternative cul-de-sac. So I think it's, uh, subdivision, if somebody came in, would move around the street, you would wanna see what that is, something that worked.
And where are we allowing private streets? How many homes?
Two, you say? There are more than two. And so you're not gonna see many of, of rooms, you're, just because of the standard.
The one thing, you know, about all those curb cuts either. You know, and so do you have, you know, having two, I don't see, sometimes having two separate curb cuts, but, they used to be pretty different.
They used to be.
And they, they, nowhere is it changed.
What's a development rate at the top of Whitestown, um, cross from?
Climbing Whitestown, cross from, but before you go, the old, the place that the mansion.
Yeah, the one that they tore that away.
Why, no balls, though.
Yeah, I know.
Before it gets priced, the road that goes in on that.
It goes around, I can't see.
How many are?
Four, three, four.
That's what, maybe it's three or four.
That may have been five of them here.
Twenty-five, thirty-five, so we. Yeah, I know, when you said that, cause I might actually do it, it's actually, it's recent. But yeah, that might have impacted that.
Is that still just gravel, I assume it's gonna be?
It's private, it's a little.
Um, the other question I had was, on Q3, private street should not be used for non-residential purposes. Any reason, current Q basis or something, there are rational there?
That was, and I don't know that there is. Um, if you go North 119, um, trying to think of a new place, past, uh, gardeners, they have two commercial, I don't really see an issue with that.
I don't either, and I'm even thinking, what is it like right down here, Harmony Castings, and we have that for? Hmm, I think you pull in and then pull it back, at least that first fifty or a hundred feet, that's at least shared, it's not all white.
Yeah, I don't know that this is true.
And it, and I think it's nice to use just one curb cut, to get back into the proper business. So, I, I, I question why that phrase.
That, so you think that, I don't, I don't really see that, you know, cause it, that one point, those convenience, they're gonna do that. The rider was gonna come in, saying entrance, and you spin off, and you're gonna do an upstairs, so.
And then, and then a little, um, strip mall down there, the, the ass studio, and.
Like what, that changed, originally it was also, I don't think it's too light, we would apply that before. It wouldn't be a lot of people.
So we're gonna do that?
For.
Like if you had, like, a police or fire, or, shot, had to get that, and then.
Can you make it conditional?
Well, it's supposed to be good to be wide, right?
The new one, yes, yeah.
The new one was on, it had to be wide, right? So police or, actually, being back there.
I mean, probably better than the driver. Okay.
Well, you can add that, can you move back to the shore?
In other words, you're hanging on to the situation, you know? For example, what I'm thinking about, if it, the park, those police stations, they share, whether you know, the, the storage units, and that's kind of sloppy, and I probably wouldn't, I mean, those police could walk through there, and that's, I mean, I believe that's a product.
I mean.
It is a product, too. So, I would say it's something I would probably consider, allowing private, private, private businesses.
Well, I, I, I wanna be careful to use conditional, conditional means something. And we don't wanna use the word conditional, conditional means public areas.
Okay, fair enough, but something where the supervisor, or, so here, you say, yeah, value back.
Value back to here.
Yeah.
Well, it is, because it's a subdivision.
So, it'll still be the four to six branches, we'd be able to make it.
So privately, will we have subdivision?
The, the, the jurisdiction is in the south.
Okay. Yes, yes. I know. We're making amazing progress. I think the fewer curb cuts you can have, the better. Uh, and I think, the, the ones I'm looking at, very reasonable uses of a shared drive. I, I don't want.
It, it actually, the company's plan was, one other place where they, we were saying that, less curb cuts, um, better, because you can have, you know, sort of, street, you know, connecting three businesses.
Talking about commercial, streets.
Right? Right, so if you get a running through, how would that affect, how's this affected?
Our definition of private street is for residential apartments. Somebody would have to change their definition, you either take out residential apartments, or, or, but it's still.
Okay, so you still would only be allowed to have two.
Two shared, shared, drop over a apartment.
Correct. And then are two, but, uh, like, the, um, would, would you just think of this, the street that you can make, put in front of, like, a business, like, you know? You got three businesses and put like this thing.
Yeah, that would be a shared access, and your access over there, I would, through Trump, this because it's on the main, the roadway, and they'll, well, it's.
Okay. I know Aldi is not in my class, but that whole, uh, Aldi shopping center, that's all private.
It is, and you think, a, a road access over there would encourage that type of development?
It is, but it's not a public road. And where would that come into play here?
I think that's where the access over there would allow it. So it wouldn't be allowed on 119, connected to Trump, it would still be solid.
And we do have an access over there, that I'm not allowed.
You get into your zone, and it's where you say, I think this is allowed, you have alternate, different standards, it's in that, cause you do want.
You do want that, that's the right way, right? But, does this not apply then, is what you're saying? Cause the sound is still defining how a road should be built at all.
Correct, it would not, it would not, this, this would apply everything outside of the, of the.
And the access over there isn't a government.
Correct. So, something like the old and clean, um, in Jackson, if it's in my class, you go, 119.
But we talked earlier about the, or, uh, where, where, the trees and, you know, that, that would still apply for that?
It would.
So, Widdies wouldn't be as close to 119 in my cast, and citizens in Jackson?
Potentially, or, again, it would have some, that, that area, full in front, to keep the separation, keep it, the rule.
Okay. Doesn't the sound would still have to talk about what that road and intersection to the arterial road is, though? Cause that's in the sound, it is. So, just cause it's trunk in the zoning order, the sound would still have to talk about how that's to be constructed. Which I don't think here, I don't think it is.
We'll need a divided section.
So, I, I don't mind if you let, if, if you wanna keep it, keep the definition of private to be residential and private, then this is applicable, I'm putting it as applicable. But we need a section in here, then, to talk about how you do Aldi.
The access overlay, so the access overlay, don't you?
We'll do something for businesses, so, in the, in the sound, or, businesses, or.
Are we still the number three down there? If you're saying, by, we, we're defining.
Then we can leave free in, and you can, this is private, and it's.
Just re, reinforce it in the back, this is all for homes and parks.
Probably right in this area, right in this section, yeah, another sec, another subsection, with the access overlay.
We're just going to have a.
Sound five three. I.
Where do you have it?
Same thing, four.
Okay, on the average.
No, that one I can imagine, right, cause I can't imagine an alley being truly residential.
Let me consider now, would an alley be like, um, let's say the trucking company, that was going to go, like, with access, where's behind it?
So, there is, alley is a cartway, or, which do a lot of traffic, partial main fronts, provide secondary means of access to the side rear, dual road. So if you had a townhouse, rear, you wanted a rear driveway, circle back, between it, that would be an alley. But it's private, but it's an alley.
So what do they call it, down there, like a file of that, if you drive in behind, is that an alley? If you go, it's like, a lot of them made the shot, it's, it's not for.
It would be an alley, not good for access.
Okay, so, that says here, alley should not be used for non-residential purposes.
Correct.
If that is an alley, that would be used for, wait, shall not be used for, oh, non-resi, I'm, 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 I got it.
It's a very native.
It is.
Yeah, non-residential. Turn it positive, alley should not be used for business purposes, and I think that they should be. Yeah, we should allow it, so I think, I agree.
They did, they did.
It was right there.
So I think we scrap, you know?
Yeah, cause even in town, I'll sometimes, I think, the town just thought about, the lights, the idea of having an alley behind, and you don't have, or, garage is right, garage is centered.
People are parked in the back. Right, and move the, the, uh, the block. But it should make sense to do that.
In a business, a bio scenario.
It's not an alley.
It really, wait, yeah.
It's usually, it's usually loading docks in the house, if you're not a twenty-five foot, you're seventy feet, so you can back a truck.
You go loading dock. This is service layer.
So if the valley, in the townhouse, you have an alley behind, is it, do they have to have it built under certain conditions or is it coming?
The town's, yeah, the town's doesn't take it over, so.
Okay. These are the ones like in the mango trails between the townhouses that fell apart in the middle of time. How's it still gonna be glass?
Oh, they will, these are abundant.
Okay, I just wondered if it's an alley, do we, you know, does it have to be built, so it could just be, they could take a load of gravel.
They could, but they may, they may take asphalt on top of the load of gravel and move through the nation by.
Okay.
Fifty percent of the road or something.
So that, that's something that we don't, we don't want to.
Private.
Okay.
We don't.
Okay. Any other questions on page forty? Forty-nine, these are road construction details here. I didn't have any comments on, anyone else have any comments?
I feel definitely this is got set. Something. It, it's, it's been updated from the township and it'll continue to be updated, it's, it's been extended, so.
Hey, I got, I got a question. It's actually, it's not a public comment, but. Since it mentions supervisors here, you, curbing, multiple warnings, this type of curbing, using and location required. You tell them about those. Is there a way with, I'm sure the word signifies that we're proven about.
We talked about curbs, I can't really look inside. Somewhere else. So most of the time, you will have a road curve. Um, not many, not many times, but you could have a development at once, concrete curbs can do that. That fifth, that's really kind of where they have, in case you ever had any concrete curves. Concrete curbs.
Is there anybody? Find that. Why would the supervisors determine that? Probably not the way. Stall. When the supervisor should determine that.
They do, when they. They're watching that, that standard detail from the dog, that we're putting this in some sidewalk on one side or both sides. Supervisor doesn't even say yes or no to that. So, um, the type of curbing we have is always applying to types of. So it's in the standard detail, which type of, we haven't seen concrete yet, so.
So then you two, says straight.
Great, you two.
This concrete here is a straight, shall be.
No, there's two types of concrete, you could do a concrete wedge, but go around this townhouse, just like pass. These would be, hold for sure. So you.
So can I?
Can we further say that then? Two, one, two choices left. Perfect.
Well, it's a two choice, two and three, right?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying. Side, I'm just, I'm just asking, eliminate fusion line, walk on the area, you can say, oh, this is a little bit. As a supervisor, this is the best type of curbing for all of this law listed here. Come on, I'm not, I don't, I don't want a supervisor. I don't want a curbing.
Do you, do you think we should include concrete wedges or?
No.
Okay, exactly, consistent.
They do, I just don't see you. I mean, no.
I'd say why don't you tell me, cause they actually, that are a problem in construction. Like because you, you're basically gonna build your base course and your steel coat, with a wet. You'd be the wedge, or, I mean, so then you can come in and get your nap, two inches of top. To meet your legislature, which makes a huge anger in construction anyway. I don't know if I still, but I know Florida has a lot. I mean, I mean, who would do that? It's being huge, I mean, construction. Cause not all of your inlets are gonna sit flush with the company, proud of the asphalt. What do you, do you follow this? I'm finding, I think it's not mentioned in there, but I'm including that. So, do you know what our perspective is for road? Or to our rootways? Is it, is it in a detail?
It's in the detail, it is.
We're not details, are we?
You don't. You will, the part of the.
Yes.
Um, it is, eight stone.
Eight inch.
Where required.
Okay.
You have.
Eight inch.
Number eight.
Okay.
You have, what have numbers? She before, she's a twenty-five, one, five. So we're here, so asphalt, and we have eleven and a half inches of, two. One, two, I can see. Two inches of five, they're not. So you get four, so you can.
Okay. What are numbers? Uh, asphalt, so that's two, two A and a lot of. From a power source perspective, I love this one. Council perspective, you can bet. I'm much, I'm much for our best back, start with the UZ episode. And you can eat many, many stories how to do this. Start with the UZ episode. And I would recommend something like a set of, that's my special, start with six inches of.
Well, we have, we have a stone, we have a, one of the three, two A.
But you said eight inches, correct.
That's above the, above that, it's your.
Wait, go over again.
We have.
It seems like a, she's testing.
We have eight inches of that, so number eight.
Okay.
Okay, two A, two inches of two A.
Oh, okay.
But that's. We have anything that's not that.
Okay, I'm not good with that aspect, I thought you were going eight inches.
I'm not.
That's why, that's not a good stuff. Okay, no, I, I'm, so you're eight inches.
Eight inches.
Two, two, two A's. Four and two more to the bottom, two, and a C over the top.
And then.
That's good.
We're doing a sealer on top of the pile, a year after.
It's just a sealer. Just like a.
Or it's like a local sealer. I'm two. A sealer on top of the final inch, and I have top.
The number nine, story, maybe it's.
About a year or so.
And, and that's before you just do a practice hole, or the seal all the cracks.
So it extends the life of the asphalt.
I can say that in there at all, I don't know many bodies.
We drive, um, the city of town.
You got the shields.
Um, it's not shield.
I can't really see.
Somebody, I can't think of anyone. It's definitely, it's not shield.
It's just what the fact, past grand part.
It is basically what we apply.
Not that great sense.
It's a red on white seal.
Now, I'm finding it right, but the rest of roads back up, that's the road.
Usually tracks, like cement bridge cracks, you know, a year, plus somebody start to get the cracks and. And it really doesn't last long.
It is on the.
So we'll do, we'll probably have a, I think, an eighteen month period, so twelve months into that eighteen months, we can go with that apply.
Okay, you talked about bonding. It's have to give a performance bond application, so you're not allowed a performance bond, that's where the maintenance bond is in.
No, we have a grade, it's part of the maintenance bond.
Okay, is you, if you're gonna want to terminate the performance bond, or if you're, performance is a maintenance bond. Right, in eighteen months, at a time to make eighteen months.
But then it's part of the eighteen month maintenance bond, we're in that.
It'll be done. Four months in, they'll do your walkthrough instead of longer, fix anything that needs fixing and talk.
So the question with that, if you go in and you're repaving, uh, existing road, do you remember where you go in with this?
That's what they wanted to do.
Okay. Just because, I mean, if it works.
Right. Been extended by seven, eight years.
Yeah, let's do it on. All the way to.
To do it.
To acknowledge. Okay.
The big forty.
Okay, so, okay, so then we moved on to page. Page watching part.
The next year for the record, I didn't do that.
Okay, so very common, I had a comment on the two inches. Um, and my other comment there was, cause we don't talk about the thickness of the intercourse. These just point the details.
Yeah, I think we'll probably take the thickness out. Yeah, there is one place we would.
Yep. Okay, and then, let's see. Okay, and again, on W two. No, I think, W two, the thickness is gonna be with some details.
Correct.
So it's the same thing. And then that red on white seal is what you were talking about there. Okay. Um, so X one.
Is that the same thing where instead of bringing each of the seven inches?
Well, this is a, we only have one concrete piece for it. And I don't know that we want another one. Well, we, we, we're gonna have.
Exit work. Ultimately.
Pressure. Pressure.
So would you propose just we get here and not have a detail for it?
Or take it out? I mean, I don't know, we want to, township roads are called three days. But we'll, we'll discuss that, object, we just verify that.
Well, so you're suggesting taking out all of X?
Yes.
I don't have an issue with that.
I just don't think anybody's gonna do. So what all parts you're talking about?
All of.
Oh, W?
Yeah. Oh, X.
What about the workers' packer? Cause I know some places are doing some. I don't know if it's popular like this.
You mean.
Workers' packers, they use that, they, so they have a way to make, uh, real concrete and spread out in a bowl of, uh, of the rolls.
Like. And it's not just crushed out, it's not, it's actual, literally concrete.
They don't look like a, a roll, so when you're done, that's, it's concrete. And a poor ground, on, on the basis of the work that I was. Yeah, the only thing I think of is a township body, the foot cross, you mean. Having that. That's why I don't know that they want to do that. And that, when I, I'm, I'm just, I was just asking, cause I know that's somewhere, you know, maybe new, probably, but it's not popular. But I agree with you.
I think it's just, yeah, just keep it consistent.
So we have all the same.
Yeah, so we can bring in that and scrap X.
Yeah, that's something, something. Is that, that involves all kinds of different equipment capabilities for one way.
Right.
It's bad.
We don't want to do that.
Okay, how far do you wanna go in there?
Um, let's go until, uh, twenty after, forty-five after, then we'll have the, the comments and we'll close up. So we got five minutes, eight minutes.
So we're now on sidewalks on page sixty.
So.
So what we are.
My comment was that when we talked about this, we leave, we go to, um, the way you want, we would agree to one. So what I, what I have in my notes. Yeah, it's another one. We, we don't have a confusion, I think, this time.
Okay, I want to, I'm just back to my last sentence.
The one that says sidewalks don't be provided for streets that are post-subdivision, are extensions of existing streets having sidewalks on one of those sides. If they're gonna require them, they're gonna require them, doesn't matter.
Why is that? Is that the key? Especially about streets. How do we get to that? You know, like, you could extend an existing street for six more lots.
Correct.
And it wouldn't, it won't leave a ten lot requirement. Right? That's the only condition I could see that's really difficult about, is a really short study exception.
It doesn't.
And I'm not trying to move it there. So scrapping one, moving through one.
So. So this may be, so the question back to the private street.
Okay.
Could you have a private street, coming off of other subdivision? And then somehow that private street, because now, you know, probably one or two moments. Could you give that better?
Do you want a private street?
You could, yeah, because it's a township road.
I can imagine, like, you brought this piece over here, and you didn't wanna build a home for your daughter. But would that require, cause there's sidewalks and subdivision, that private street.
But it wouldn't be an.
It's not an extension street.
So it's a, it wouldn't require sidewalks.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be an extension. It would be a new street, a private street, if the other one is an existing, that it could be a public street.
But that's defended in a private street.
We have provisions of the sidewalk, I mean, up by, by the street. Sidewalk, but I could incorporate it into the cross, just like. It would be a driveway, it would have, it would have. You would have a driveway. It would, the way that the driveway.
Yeah, so it was a ground, a highway, and that'd be concrete for that sidewalk. Probably approaching that inside, concrete.
That's, I have a lot of questions, so that's, that's in our boards?
Yes.
Okay, one more, two, we'll try to finish this page. So, um, my quick comment here is, can we just reference the Pendo details? Because I know we're out of, nobody follows what was written in hardcore bits. They, they, the, the ground, the driveway just comes down the road, all the ground washes out. You know, they really, you look at the Pendo clauses, there's, there's usually a dip there, the fallings, the grating of channels. What is written, it's not clear what has happened when you look at the Pendo's standard, it's very important that you have to do, and they have a lot of them to their price, so.
Very clearly, they got, and they have a lot of that, so.
The township has a derivative ordinance, that's probably the same, but finished, so in the class statement out of here. It was default to that.
Okay.
Because I don't know, you're, you're getting into what's covered in order.
I'm fine with that, I just, just love the way you, the way this, when I read this, it said, well, it was all of them, whatever it's. Did you just take that out? Or reference, reference the driver's warrants?
So the, the downside of that is when the development comes in, it, they're all private streets. Until they're taken over. And so we don't get into approving size of driveways for each one of those houses that goes in. So it's nice to have a standard. Know what they're doing, but same token. We can default that, the driveway ordinance, and just somehow put a note in the drawing, you know, they would have to comply. You don't put a driveway issue, a fire rate, and it's going to be five feet away, or something like that. So I still think we'd better come out here, because we have one, it's already covered, just drive it.
And they just reference the ordinance anywhere.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the question, yeah.
Now, we naturally move things like Z two. Because that's really not driveway.
It's not a driveway, we can build in front of it.
Because I'm even thinking. Breaking out rocks. And people do that all the time. And I don't think that's legitimate according to.
I don't know, did, you know, anything, your, your line is.
And then the first thing, we're complaining in the center of the house.
Right.
I don't, I don't mind when we need the driveway stuff, but we need the driveway orders. It sounds like, yeah, another ordinance, we better review, it's worth making all these consistent.
Well, yeah, we'll reference this, saying, when you get the driveways and entrances, shall comply with ordinance. It would be eliminated to that point, if you still have any subdivision ordinance. You don't, you don't, I'm staying, very nearly, I'm staying in detail, it says. A wide driveway, you know, that comes out, gives that to that.
Because, um, we talked before about driveways and eight. There's a couple different scenarios, there's a scenario where it's some of the old wedge curve, it's about race. And here, it's not a problem, you can slope in, and have your water run over the street, that's right. Then there's going on the white town road, where you want to go down into the gutter, and then back up. To the street, so that you're not.
I just want, we have two different standards, in development, not development. But that's what the case is.
No, I agree, I, I think it's reasonable.
Because it's a different standard than you do want.
You want, and you're different, depending on two scenarios. Because matter of fact, your current section road detail, right away detail, is actually slow coming whole right away into the street.
Right.
So you want a twelve feet design road, so onto the street, which means you can't possibly come up to the street with a driveway. Okay, we can go one more here, or?
No, let's finish this page.
Okay. I don't, the snowshoes, um. We talked about that on the same issue. The street lighting, um, I think we went over that pretty well, and I think this covers it.
Okay, definitely, we'll overhand it for a shoot. Tell me, some of these, other than maybe the entrance. If there's a development you want to look, you go to sign there, and you want to look at it. And so you can tell, the sign, I believe, for the.
And, and the way this is written. For example, street lighting, every provided dimensions development is required by the law. And that, that's fine, because you want to know as a developer going in on the sign, whether it's going to be there. Because you have to have a mechanism to take what when you're done. Correct. Uh, there's many attachments that don't do that, and at the end. They actually wanted me to do that instead of that. And I said, wait, you can't change the rules out of the way, bro. I don't have an HOA that's, that in their budget paid for a street rent. We agreed to street rents, house lights, individual house lights, we understand that, it's bigger. You can't change the rules out of the way, bro.
So.
Oh, but we, yeah, because, you know, I could have gone in upfront, and I've been, we have lights in the intersection, you go to the HOA budget, you're fine. But once the HOA is established and rolling, you can't change the rules again, it just can't happen. So, yeah, they, they back that.
It, it, it would depend on the location, or if you had a, two hundred lot subdivision in the white town. You make one of the street light there, because it's, you know, nowhere, you can't see where it is, where you're, it looks still, and that's five lots. You really don't, so it's going to be a judgment call once, once they're, resident, you know.
And as long as it's designed upfront, right, it's fine.
I know, I agree.
The way that people call it, township, they complain, it's a lot of street lights, and so forth. And they're busts out, so.
No, no, I would say so.
Okay, so let's stop, so we're now, we're starting from fifty-one, we're going to start with the top fifty-two next.
Okay. Any comments? I'm ready for that.
I got a phone, sorry. I've stopped, speaking really fast, everybody went up, overwhelmed with changing the rules. Does the township sentence be on, in reference to sections? Does the township change be, or have the rank change to do with some township roads?
They're just, they're just.
It's a statistical study.
Okay, okay, so studies are taken on, they got sections, this is. Uh, the other thing is, speaking of snowshoes and cul-de-sacs, there's nothing in here for streets that bang at the end of township. A county park. For example, under Chingal Road, one of the end years, it's just, there's no place for, there's no snowshoe. No place for truck, easily drum around, because there's something that can drive on the corner, or out that. You have American street roads, Chingal, all those, roads just kind of end.
Are existing roads? Or maybe existing roads, you can, no. Sorry. You take that improvement.
Well, I'm saying, so future, can't do anything with existing roads, I'm saying, if we, if somebody cuts a road, and it's a township road, but it just ends, and. You know, have that kind of line, like fire roads on this, there's, and it's very difficult for, there are no snowshoes, no cul-de-sac. No place for trucks, easily drum around, can we, that's.
Without, and wouldn't occur here. Or maybe that wouldn't occur, you would have no new road built, because of cul-de-sac.
Oh, so. But you can't, the cul-de-sac, official cul-de-sac, that's what we define cul-de-sac, because road continues into the next town. So right now, Chingal comes out, staying good, and it's, and it's grabbed into the more.
So you're, kind of what you're talking about, Mike, is what the proposing down in the back, or?
Right, exactly.
That that road will go on, and actually into Beaver County, to.
Right, exactly. I'm just saying, if you have something, because we do have those, those, we screw it right up and after, and again, or put something in place.
Anytime I, but it up against a property line basis, you're building a development, and you know eventually that road will connect through to the next property. Whether it's township, or just a property, or whatever. I've always been required to put a cul-de-sac at that point, but later than it would be removed when that road would extend through. But the right away, and all would be sufficient to have a full cul-de-sac at that location, the end of property.
I guess I would just put that in, right?
But I assume.
Well, I would assume.
I assume it's covered here somewhere.
I will do that, I will do that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Because we want to make sure that's covered.
Yeah, if you create a new road.
New roads are actually made now.
And you want to make sure there's something.
Yeah, we do have those, so I can see.
I mean, you could have, theoretically, if she was, if that would be developed. And, and some of their properties would be, the, the back of the farm right across from me, the back of that farm is Beaver County.
Correct.
So, okay.
And maybe a private lane from there, just, you know, model back, or just, you know, you understand that. The other thing is, I guess, that is what I mentioned earlier, supervisors. I've tried to coordinate there, don't assume that supervisors are going to know that, I don't believe those two choices exist for curves. You know, we did make, you know, ordinances, the current amendment is, of course, right now, ordinances. That were ready back then, soon people moved to the fifteen, or the side wall setback. Met the outside walls, not the inside walls, but now here we are, and you're challenging us because. Could read as sidewalks, inside, common times, and you can't. So I'm just saying, on the curves, it doesn't specifically say, it's up to supervisors, but it doesn't say. It's only these two. Or, I'll go supervisors, I doubt, I mean, which is, okay, probably will involve all.
Yeah, but what we do, what we try to do in those cases, like sidewalks, and terms, we would spell out. That, you know, going with proposing sidewalk on one side. So that it's known that it's a decision to begin on the other side. So it carries through for the approval stage, you touch, you know, if you have the option, one side, two sides. As opposed to most of the stuff, in the grade, a review letter, if it meets the ordinance, you won't mention it, because it meets the ordinance. So those days, we can call them, you can do that as well, use the same rules and cover. Oh, thanks, that's a good. Sorry.
Okay, the, call me in comments? Okay. If it's, uh, if it's, we don't look, jerk, so we're just going to.